I know.
Oh, my God. It's like they are unbridled. There is no limit to what they feel like they can do.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular work session of the City Council to order. Before we begin, happy Valentine's, everybody. I'm sorry that we have a meeting on the big date night of the year, but I hope that you rescheduled your Valentine's date night with your spouses or significant other. So, but what we're going to do, because we have guests around the table, we'll start with everybody introducing themselves so that we know who is all at our table. We'll start with you.
Michelle Collins, City Clerk.
Dan Gustafson, City Council.
Vince Workman, City Council.
Jenny Rodey, CFO.
Bethany Brewer, a organizational development and strategic initiatives.
Dan Collison, Director of Visits to All Public Affairs for Sherman Associates.
Good evening. I'm Bob Lund, Vice President of Facilities for Sherman Associates.
Shiva Anderson, Senior Vice President of Operations and Compliance.
Justina Rayner, Regional Director of Property Management.
Melissa Reistad, Regional Manager for Sherman Associates.
I'm Jeff Thompson, the Community Development Director.
Jen Doster, City Commissioner.
Karen Peterson, Board Director.
Dan Keely, City Council.
Kara Schultz, City Council.
Hugo Mcfee, Deputy City Manager.
Good evening, everyone. Greg Lindberg, City Manager.
Elizabeth Kaltz, Mayor, and we have a guest in the room.
Erin Adler from the Star Tribune.
Welcome. Welcome, everyone.
You're the only one that has me introduce myself.
We value the press here.
We, you know, if you're in the room, you're going to be recognized. We are inclusive. So the City Clerk will note that all City Council members are present, and our work sessions are very informal, and we go directly to our agenda items. So the first item on the agenda is a letter of support for Sherman and Associates' Grand Marketplace apartment project. And I think our presenter is our Community Development Director, Jeff Thompson. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and good evening. If we could get that first presentation pulled up. Mayor, I will do just a brief background on the request, go through some of the information within your background in the packet, and then certainly, as you know, we have representatives of Sherman here tonight to talk about your project and their request for their property here in Burnsville. Don't mind us. We're just struggling with the new computer here in council chambers. And by struggling, I mean enjoying the new computer. There we go. So, Mayor and Council, as you know, Sherman developed, actually, as part of the original, part of the city, part of the original heart of the city phases, the Grand Marketplace project, the Grand Marketplace Apartments located just south of the Nicollet Commons Park and the Ames Center. It's kind of a mixed-use building, primarily residential, but it was developed and it's been continuously owned and managed by Sherman since it was developed in 2001. It sounds like it was occupied and completed in 2004. The building today has 113 units. It's roughly a 50-50% mix of market rate and affordable units, a little bit more on the market rate units, but there are a total of 52 affordable units within that building today that were originally constructed as income-restricted units at 60% of the area median income. That's the level of affordability that they're at. As I mentioned, the Sherman team will go in detail. This is really their application that they're making right now to the Dakota County Community Development Agency, so I will let them talk about that application and the need for it. But in short, they are restructuring the existing financing on this project. There are, all those existing sources of financing are non-city sources, so the cities not have any notes or existing financing in the structure. It's all other agencies and/or private equity that are included in the refinancing that they're endeavoring on. I think there are really, and so as part of that, they're seeking new sources of funding. They'll talk about those both from Dakota County as well as from Minnesota Housing, and those will come in phases over time. But an important note also for the council is even the new sources of funding that they are seeking are not city sources. They are from other agencies, so they're not asking us tonight for any sort of funding from us in terms of notes or loans or anything to support the project as they're being proposed. I think there are, for the council's consideration, really three primary changes that would come out of this to make you aware of from, since we practice and endeavor in the housing sphere within our community. The first, they are proposing to make substantial investments and improvements to the building. The building is now 20 years old by my math, just under, so they're proposing some improvements that they will talk about. And then, second, they are proposing to preserve the existing affordable housing units within the building, so those 52 existing units. And then they're actually proposing to expand the affordability by converting the existing market rate units into income-restricted units. And again, they'll talk a little bit about that as part of their presentation. So those are the kind of just three important things as the council looks at it from their ask of a letter of support, how it relates to projects here in Burnsville. So the key question, I think, for the council tonight, what they are asking of the council is, does this, will the City Council support sending a letter of support to the Dakota County CDA? As I mentioned, this is not a determinant of financing. These are not our sources of funding. I would also note that the Dakota, the county programs operate differently. There are a lot of programs in which we have to be the applicant, and we work with developers to submit that application. This is not the type of program. This is an application they are making directly to CDA. They've already done that and are in the process of doing that. So this is just an additional item that they are asking to submit as part of that, is a letter of support from the council. It's council's discretion on whether to submit that, whether or not, and exactly what the wording is. I know we included a draft that they had sent to us as an example of a letter of support that could be submitted. And so with that, I will turn it over to Dan Collison, who can introduce further the team and then go through the presentation that they have tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you to Jeff and Regina, who I met with, I think, two months ago, on actually just building relationship and connecting to understand the priorities of the city of Burnsville that I've known and loved and come to over the last 25 years I've lived in Minnesota and to now through the lens of development in Sherman Associates, understand what your priorities are. For those who maybe were around when we first built, developed Grand Marketplace, the company has grown. We're now in six states. We, over the nearly 45 years, although we say 40-plus, have grown to be a company with 650 employees, having developed over 12,000 units, and currently operate 640,000 square feet of commercial, as well as five hotels, four Starbucks, three restaurants, and two solar gardens. And in that work, and this is in the deck, have deep commitments to sustainability, social impact, and bring forward a lot of special talents and abilities to deliver complex, high-profile projects with public and private partnerships. So working with the city of Burnsville is important. I wanted to also comment before handing it to Trevor Martinez, who will introduce himself as the team member who will provide development services on this project, that our commitment to the heart-of-the-city vision and to the city center is embedded in what we're talking about here. Our priority to improve the resident experience. Thank you, Bob, to actually move forward through this slide presentation.
I'm having a great presentation right here. Looks good to me. And our priority is to improve the resident experience and lift the quality of housing stock options to reduce resident utility costs, therefore new HVAC systems and impacts on climate change. And just noting, before we dig into this, that during COVID, over the last three years, we've spent close to $750,000 on capital improvements to maintain the property ahead of this proposal to re-syndicate and pour significant dollars into it. So, moving to Trevor, just introduce yourself quickly, and you can, we're going to just keep passing this up and down the road here. He'll get into the weeds a little bit.
Yes.
Do you want to introduce yourself because you came in late while we were doing introductions and your role with the company?
Sounds good. Yeah, apologies for being late, everyone. My name is Trevor Martinez. I'm a developer at Sherman Associates. It is functionally my job to manage a lot of the financial aspects, as well as to hire the architects and contractors and review sort of holistically the transaction as a whole. And so I do a lot of representation, both to city councils in my role, as well as to lenders, investors, and all of the different financing partners, and, you know, will be the ones that are responsible for completing the applications that earlier here have been talked about. I'm also here to give a pretty high-level overview of, you know, financially what's going to happen to the property and why, you know, we're sort of going through this process now. And so the next section, or the next slide, sorry, that's up in front of everyone, is a quick bullet-pointed list on what Section 42 housing is. Big picture, there are two different types of capital A affordable housing, those that receive operational subsidy and those that receive capital subsidy or subsidies to the, you know, cost of constructing or maintaining that property. At this project, right now, we do have both forms of subsidy that comes in the form of payments from housing assistance vouchers and from a HAP contract, as well as originally, 20 years ago, when the building was built, there were, there was subsidy that was received for keeping the cost of that, or sorry, for restricting the rents on that in the future. Over time, the buildings need significant capital improvements, and, you know, in recognition of that, buildings become eligible every 15 years, roughly, to be eligible for renovations that are also provided with capital subsidy for major building items such as, you know, roof repairs, mechanical systems, things that are, that are large to, to, to the building. Because unlike with other properties, you don't have huge amounts of surplus cash flow that comes out of any of these projects because we agreed to restrict the rent limits. And so Section 42 housing is that capital subsidy program, and we're more or less going to start that, again, with what's called a re-syndication. Re-syndication is just a fancy word, meaning that there's going to be new tax credits that are going to be put on the project as a result of the renovation. The tax credits that are generated by the project are based off of how much money we spend on the building, more or less to make sure that, that the amount of subsidy being received is in pair, is on parity with the amount of improvements that are being done to the property. And so this building has been eligible for about five years to be able to go through this process. If the building was built, developed about 20 years ago, and so now we're endeavoring on that because there are significant capital needs that are above and beyond, you know, your typical paint or carpet or other small, you know, repairs that we're seeing at this particular property. You'll hear from a number of other team members tonight on what that includes, as well as what some of those existing conditions at the property are. This project was originally built back in 2004 as part of this heart-of-the-city redevelopment. I won't go over every single one of the details and bullet points that was put on here, but predominantly, you know, there's a lot, it's a fairly highly amenitized building that's in, you know, a fairly urbanized location. And there were a number of pieces of this project that, at the time, were fairly innovative. And, and along with that innovation can often come, you know, those first steps, once you hit those years, 15 or 20, of infrastructure, particularly because there were some innovations in infrastructure here that are starting to be a little bit less common. It was developed as a mixed-use building, but as, over time, that resident population has, you know, been, has, has trended more and more towards the affordable units with a number that you'll hear about later of, of, of the market rate units that are now being occupied by those individuals holding, or households, holding those, those project-based vouchers. Sorry, not project, but individual voucher payments. With that, I will hand it over to, yep, to talk about the current conditions and tenant demographics.
So our next slide talks about our resident demographics. We have household income, and you can see that for our portable units, most of our residents are either, we have below $10,000 going all the ways up to right above $80,000. Our age range, where our, it is across the board, the majority is children. We have a lot of children at the property, but it goes all the ways up to some of the elderly. Out of the 61 market rate units we have, 50 of them do have vouchers already. So when we transfer over to going to tax credit, they will more than likely qualify. We're also expecting a large amount of our market rate units to still qualify under the current tax credit max limits. And the next slide that we have, it shows the occupation with most of our residents that we have right now. And it's, I won't go into all of them, but we have service industry, we have some retired transportation, we have a vast variety. Same with relationship status. You'll see the head of household is in the blue, and then we also have other adult house, hold members, children's, and spouses.
So we talk about the investment, and we think of our investment on a per-unit basis. So put it in perspective, the, the median household, house value in, in Burnsville is roughly 350,000. Our appraised value for each apartment is roughly 200,000. So on a per-unit basis, we're looking at investing around $70,000 a unit for upgrades, new roof, new exterior finishes, et cetera. So try to put it in perspective on a per-unit basis rather than talking about this huge number. You'll see on this first slide here, you know, we, I'm sorry, and we've broken those investments into four types. What we're spending in the unit, what we're spending in the common areas, what we're spending on the building exterior, and what we're spending on the site work. All of those are kind of different animals, all requiring different kind of specialties. When you look at the units and you see the slides across the top here in the bottom right, the number-one priority we have is actually replacing every HVAC unit in the, in the building. 20 years old. I just replaced my unit at my house. I spent 14 grand, and this is basically no different than that. It's a self-contained unit, and that way we can manage each unit independently. That's one example, and all those systems have reached end of life. And what makes it even more difficult is the manufacturer of the units no longer exists, and there's no longer spare parts. So we're forced into a complete renovation of each unit's HVAC system. Then on top of that, as you typically remodel your house after 20-plus years, it's new carpets, it's going to be paint, it's going to be new countertops. Every one of the countertop scenarios planned to be replaced. We're looking at new faucets, new sinks, new, all that kind of stuff as well. And then as part of that, we'll be replacing the lighting in the kitchen and the lighting in the bathrooms. Again, if you look at the pictures, a little bit dated, you know, we want to get rid of the fluorescents. We want to get, you know, upgrades to be a little bit more modern, be more competitive with our neighbors. Then we move to the common areas, and that's the bottom set of slides, for the middle three, I should say, in the upper-left corner. The upper-left corner is a typical. We have fluorescent lighting on all our stairwells. We have three stairwells, five stories each. So we have to replace, you know, figure it out, two lights, a stair, every floor. There are fluorescents, so we're trying to upgrade those, put motion sensors on them so that they are more energy-efficient. We have a third of a mile of corridors in our building that we have to upgrade, carpet, paint, lighting as well. And then the community room and post-mail, post-office boxes, the bottom middle two pictures, we have to bring them up to speed as well. The mailboxes are from 20 years ago. They're no longer what's really serviceable for the building, so it's a complete remodel of our lobbies. The next slide shows kind of the exterior of the building and what we have to do. Bottom-left corner, the garage lighting has to be completely upgraded. We have to clean it. We have to re-stripe it. We look at the exterior of the building, the new roof. That roof is 20 years old. It's pretty, it's seen better days. We then have to also look at all the siding and brick replacements or repairs. We're probably replacing a good portion of the cement board. We're going to be cleaning and upgrading the stucco, and we have to do probably tuck pointing to 10% or 20% of the building. So pretty significant work in order to keep the building envelope from leaking. And then finally, the site work, the bottom three photos, the biggest item here is we have over 300 lineal feet of retaining wall that has to be replaced, reached end of life. We have over 200 lineal feet of railings that no longer are functional and, in fact, aren't even safe for the current codes. And then finally, we're looking at the whole courtyard, looking at, and also along Nicollet, replacing a lot of concrete and/or removing the concrete and actually putting in landscaping to reduce the heat island in the center, the courtyard. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the, kind of the listing and the summary of what I just talked about in order to provide that detail for you for later review.
With affordable housing projects, they, and particularly these, these acquisition rehab projects, they are, they have really long timelines. I started working on this project about a year ago, and as you'll notice, the latest slide on that, when the project will be completed, won't be until the late portion of 2025. Throughout, through today, we've been spending a significant amount of time and effort getting those different various engineering reports, staff reports, developing drawings, working on applications both for, for financing, as well as for, you know, environmental review and, and, and survey review and otherwise, to be able to do this. We've gone through a significant number of application periods with Minnesota Housing, Dakota County, et cetera, and, and are continuing to go through that effort now. The hope in this project is that we'll start on this major renovation of this property about a year from now, in the, in March of 2024 or so, along, as long as everything goes to, to plan here, and that we're going to continue working from there. But this is not a project that, that you're going to see, you know, active work on here in the next two months, three months, six months, eight months, or even potentially 12 months, because it takes a significant amount of time to go through all of those, those county and state processes, as well as go through the tax-exempt bond allocation process, the refinancing of the property, and to get all of the, the, you know, bidding and otherwise requirements that are, that are needed for, for this project. You know, the intent of, of this, this renovation is really to make it be as, as, you know, reflective of the current tenant population as much as possible while maximizing the amount of, while maximizing the amount of reinvestment that can, you know, be made to make the residents that are in this building feel even better and be able to have, have, you know, better functioning HVAC systems and, and enjoy the property and increase its energy efficiency. And so that's why the changes for, for the proposed unit mix are what they are in order to expand on, on, on the ability and availability of funding to be able to, to do this and to make the building as, as nice as it can be, you know, without the, the funding sources and without the, the, you know, making the project 100% affordable into the future, there wouldn't be the dollars to be able to include things like, you know, as much of the roof repair, exterior, the site work, and, and the unit improvements as, as possible. And with a significant portion of the market rate units already being occupied by the affordable users and with the average income of, of the, of the building exactly where, you know, it was gone over where it was earlier, we're just trying to make this building as reflective as possible of the tenant population and have it be a home that these people can continue to live in for, for as long as possible. Doing these sort of critical repairs stops the building from, from falling out of affordability. It stops it from, from having to go through a market rate buyer to be able to collect that type of equity to be able to make reinvestments in, in the property. And that, that, that process is a very painful one. There's a reason why that is, that's looked down upon pretty significantly in the housing industry because that process takes about five years, and I don't think that anyone on any side is ever happy with it. Outside of that, the total development cost, just in terms of giving you numbers to wrap your head around for the larger project, now that, 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 you know, Bob has broken it down in terms of, of on a per-unit basis and what that would look like in comparison to, to a household, you know, the ratio that Bob gave, you know, 70,000 to 200,000 means that roughly a third of the value of this property is going to be reinvested in it. And that's, 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 you know, the type of, of long-term owner that we are. We don't plan on selling this building anytime soon. We don't plan on stopping to manage, and we don't stop, plan on stopping being part of this, this community. The total development cost for the project will be about $35 million and will require an allocation of, of tax-exempt bonds. There will be new loan come housing tax credits that are issued that will require affordability for a minimum of 15, if not 30, years for the project. And there will be other financing requirements that come out of the other gap sources, typically for, for the more deeply affordable, more deeply affordable units there. We are working with Dakota County on the expansion of a HAP contract, potentially moving it from one that is elsewhere within their portfolio onto this property. As was covered earlier, we're not seeking any new entitlement improvements nor, nor funding improvements for the property. But we are, you know, notifying the city that the plan, that in order to have this reinvestment in the property occur, that we will be converting 61 of the market rate units to tax credit units. However, a large number of those units are already occupied by Section 8 voucher holders, so they're not, you know, at, at, they're not being occupied by household incomes that are particularly high. From there, there's going to be a huge amount of, of involvement that we're going to go with our residents that I think that Justina is going to talk us through.
Yeah. So with the resident engagement and involvement, we kind of broke it down here for you guys with, first of all, with the notification. We'll start this 120 days before closing on new finance. And typically, we'll host a resident meeting to share the information with the residents, down to the scope of work, hours of work, process for the notification of the in-unit work as well and income recertifications that will take place. Around that same time, too, Sherman will start with the initial certification process to help determine that household's income qualifications. And we do follow the rent and income limits are set by Dakota County. So Sherman will ask that our residents' income be two-and-a-half times the amount of rent amount, and we will also run new background checks on our current residents and verify the income and the assets as well. Then relocation, Sherman will offer relocation advisory services and/or paid incentives to residents who need to move out. If it comes down to that, which may cover moving costs. It also may cover connection of services or initiating their security deposit to them right away, and then also utilizing other surrounding communities if they could not continue to live at Grandma Parket, where else they could live at, too, along with if it works out to go to another Sherman Associates property. Sherman will establish an area where residents will, can remain, and the building in can relax and work while, you know, items are being done in their homes, the work is being done. And those residents will also receive gift cards once the work is completed. And that's our presentation.
We're happy to answer any questions.
I believe the council. Yes.
You said you're not going to do anything for about a year or two years.
It's likely that you won't see activity on the process. I mean, we, we are actively working on this every day. We have, we are going through all the different and various processes for, for applications and for diligence and determining design drawings and things of that nature, so we are still actively doing work. It's just that there won't be any work at the property done for about a year.
What about the safety and fire issues and that currently at the building?
Oh, sorry, any operational-related issues and life safety issues are handled on, yeah, on a time limit. Yeah. It's, it's not like work stops the property. All, you know, maintenance and units is going to continue to continue at the property. These are for like large capital reinvestment items, not, not annual operational issues.
Have you, also, I want to just follow.
Sure.
Have you got a number yet, or do you still have to go through your diligence to see, guess how many residents might get displaced in this process?
The, so the, the final number will come when we start doing them, or between four and six months before closing. We'll go through and ask and, you know, notify all the residents of the process that we are going through. If we were to pull a number out, like, off the top of our head, which probably wouldn't be the greatest thing to do, the maximum number, you know, that I would see would be probably in the 40s, but I don't think it's going to be anywhere near that high based on the income, and not a percentage, like total, total unit count.
Thank you.
Got bids?
Thank you.
Vice President Workman?
Just to kind of get the lay of the land here, so as it stands right now, it's 50-50 market rate versus affordable. Of those market rate, you said 15 of the 60 units are on, of the market rate are on vouchers anyways. So is this looking to convert essentially the entire building into affordable housing then? Is that what we're looking at?
Right.
Just for clarification. Okay. You know, that word can be scary to people, but it's always been my belief that, you know, affordable housing that is scary is a result of owners who aren't involved or have neglected maintenance or haven't done the things that you all have done or are trying to continue to do. When I drive by that building, you would never know. You just, I mean, it looks like any other building because you take good care of it, and it sounds like you're trying to continue to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the benefit of those watching the meeting and those of us who aren't in the development business of publicly qualified housing, can you tell us what percent of the cost to build this project 20 years ago was public versus your own and private investment dollar? Just ballpark. Just ballpark.
I can give you probably a ratio. I don't know what the total development cost of the original project was.
Percentage breakdown.
Yeah, on a percentage basis, if, based on the program requirements, it's probably around 25 to 30%.
Is public money?
Yes.
That helps. And for the clarification of the audience, I think there's sometimes a misnomer that developers can build qualified housing without any public support and unless they're in the business of losing a lot of money for the benefit of the general good. It usually doesn't work that way. How often does Sherman requalify each resident once they are qualified and get a unit? Are they annually?
It's annual.
Annual, annually checked? That question came to mind when you were speaking, and you mentioned that you'll go through a requalification, and it made me think, well, how often is that done anyway, right? What does Sherman charge for a market rate unit at Grand Market Square today? Like a two-bedroom, two-bath or one-and-a-half bath, whatever it is?
It ranges depending on what floor it's on. There's several factors, if it's a small one, a large one, but anywhere from 1,400 to 1,800.
1,400 to 1,800, and that's pretty much what market rate in Burnsville is for similarly aged benefits, amenities, best put it that way, amenities. And finally, a question for Jeff, and this is maybe a question, might be a big one, get back later. But I'm looking at this from a holistic perspective, and how does this fit into the mix of housing as a whole for affordable, a level of affordability or specifically qualified voucher housing in Burnsville? It's not a big deal to take 40 or 50 units and add that to the mix. And I mean, it's not like it's a several hundred units type of thing, but I was just curious, trying to get my arms around, what does the big picture look like in Burnsville for affordability? Because there's various levels of affordability, which I've learned over my years sitting at this table. And unfortunately, the general public will lump it all into Section 8. Everything's just Section 8, right? When in fact, some are very mildly subsidized. And then there's more significantly subsidized, and it's quite a spectrum difference. But Jeff, if you have any sense as to what that is in Burnsville?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have the specific number tonight. I do know that Dakota County tracks that across all communities in Dakota County. A number of essentially affordable housing units in a city based on income level, based on financing restrictions, right? So those that are, receive public financing and therefore are required to be income restricted. So I can certainly follow up with that information across Burnsville. What we don't track, what's harder to get on is what is often called the naturally occurring affordable housing, right? Those units in the community that are just naturally, just at market conditions, meeting affordability restrictions. I think that's one of the things, when we talked in our all-day work session about our housing inventory, to get a little bit deeper dive into our market conditions here in Burnsville. So that will be a little bit harder, but I can certainly follow up with information on current restrictive covenant across our communities based on county, state funding sources.
Thank you. I think that's just a good conversation for us to have because I think it's important for everybody to understand, to put it in context and perspective. When they hear or see a story, oh, they're going to, you know, they want to do this. Again, it's sort of lumped in, and sometimes people don't really have the facts on how many actual voucher-based homes or apartments we offer, right? Compared to other cities or just period, just how many are there? And what percentage of total units exist in Burnsville, like total apartment units? To get a real factually based, you know, number of percentage of what are supported with vouchers. Thank you.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for a second, going back to your first questions on how often we certify? Currently, because we are mixed income property, we have to certify annually every resident to determine if they're eligible for any program, depending on the designation of the unit. But once we go to 100%, it's only done at the time of move-in, and that's it. Because they automatically qualify as long as they live there. So you just, for the clarification, I just wanted to make sure you know that.
That's a very good point. May I follow up? That reminds me of when I lived in California back in the late 70s, and people would get into a qualified apartment complex and then stay there, and then their income dramatically changed, and they were basically locked into subsidized rent, and they were not qualified anymore. Is that state statute that doesn't require you to requalify people, so?
If it is subsidized, if this project pays Section 8, yes, they will lose their subsidy. If it's a tax credit and they go over income, they can stay there the rest of their lives and still pay the rent. We are not, under the program, they're not forced to live, keep the unit.
Thank you. Well, just from my perspective, there's, I know that there's a very long waiting list in Dakota County to get into subsidized housing. CDA has a much bigger demand than they have a supply. And when circumstances like that, where a person may get in, and then a few years later, they do better in life, and they continually benefit from subsidized housing, that's a shame because that's holding up a unit that a family in serious need can't get into. Thank you.
Kara, do you have any questions?
I do not at this time.
Okay. Well, I've been here from the beginning of all of this. So I'm glad to hear that you're going to refinance and put money back into the building, and you're going to invest both in capital and operations. Is that what I heard, Karen? Because here's the problem and a big concern of mine. The building hasn't been well-cared-for. About seven years ago, it was so bad that I got complaints. So I called George to come and walk the building with me, and he saw it also. So it wasn't just me, and because I know George and have a relationship with him, and I can call him, and he would respond. And there was some work that needed to be done outside of the building as well. So a lot of that got taken care of. My concern, if you have operations, money coming into all of this. And what I have experienced is that the management company that you hire, there has been a turnaround often. How many, how many management companies have you had in that building?
One, we're the operator.
You're the operator. Whoever you're hiring sometimes are not very courteous to your tenants. And they call them names, and that's not, you know, it's not acceptable. But that's your business. The other, my concern is the displacement of some of your tenants who have been there from the beginning and paying market rate and are handicapped. And that's a concern for me because it's very hard. I understand that you're going to help them with relocation. My hope is that when you do have a conversation with them, that you ease their anxiety because some of them have MS, and it's difficult. And they've lived there from the beginning, from day one, paying market rate. So I'm happy to hear that you're going to improve the building, and you're going to also put some money into operating. My hope is that there is more of a welcoming and a courtesy to your tenants because I can tell you, your garage looks awful. So, and how often? Do you clean it once a year?
Once a year. Once a year.
Once a year? So you have a cleaning company come in and clean it once a year. See, I live across the street, a knucklehead in the Park Crest building, and I've been there from the beginning of that building. So what I would like to see, so I have some concerns about the displacement of the people who have been there from the very beginning and they're handicapped. But my hope is that you're going to be there to help them with this relocation process.
I can expand a little bit on that, too, and give a little bit more context in terms of a relocation. So the market rents that are currently at the property that are in that, you know, 15 to $1,800, I'm sorry, $14 to $1,800, you know, a month rental range. You know, the rental range that we're probably looking at is something closer to, you know, 12-ish or 13-ish hundred dollars. And so the primary, you know, we don't have, we don't require, if they can show proof of income for two and a half times the rent in that particular unit, we don't go any further than that to qualify fully to see what they own. But generally speaking, in terms of rental rate setting, that's probably in the 70 to 80% of AMI range, and now we're going to 60. And so it's not that the general renter profile, we expect to have massive or significant changes. But I absolutely can say that our staff that work on relocation do so with extreme compassion. You know, this is certainly never, never a happy day to have to talk to someone, even when they are significantly over income and are benefiting from qualified and subsidized housing. It's never, it's never a happy day, and that's one of the reasons why we start that process so early, that four to six months, you know, or so prior to the closing because that recertification doesn't have to be done until you place the building in service. And so from the time that we have that initial resident moving until move-out is not a week, it's not three months, it's not even six months. It's typically, can be up to a year because oftentimes, you know, during the renovation and rehabilitation of that property, you know, because that building won't be placed back in service from the purpose of tax credits until probably 12 months after that original closing, there will be, you know, somewhere in that six to nine-month range to work with the tenants on finding the most suitable housing situation possible so they aren't subject to seasonal or other forms of demand.
Because when that building was built, we also had a great relationship in saying that, you know, some of your tenants can park in the ramp. And they have. So my hope is that, you know, that in improving the building and reinvesting in the building, that you also be kind to your tenants. Yeah. So I'm glad to hear that you're reinvesting in it because it really needs it. And it's not as if I, you know, seven years ago, I walked it with George. I haven't been in the building, I have, up late. And so I know what it looks like. And we get photographs from tenants. So. So I hope that we continue the partnership and make sure that things look good because I don't want to call George. But yeah, reinvesting in the building is a good thing.
Thank you.
I just am concerned of the displacement and relocation of tenants who have been loyal to you, paying market rate.
Absolutely.
For very, very long. Because it is a great building, and some of the people have great views from where they are because they face the park, and they have a great view of the downtown. And I've been to those units because they've invited me in to show me what it's like and what they appreciate about all of that. Yeah. So they're not going to have that anymore if they get relocated someplace else. Some of those folks pay market rate. Yeah. Dan?
I had some mixed feelings on this whole thing in the beginning. Dan and I talked quite a bit a few times about what you were up to. For me, it came down to, I do believe we need more workforce-type housing in our city. Our Chamber of Commerce will certainly tell you we need more of that. And if you've been paying attention to us, and I hope you have, as a council, we pay very close attention to our housing stock here and especially our multi-housing. It's nice to have someone come in that wants to work with us and be a partner with us because I think that's how it's going to work. You know, it's really all about providing just good, safe, quality housing for everybody, whether it's market rate, affordable, or the workforce housing. So thank you for doing that. It's, I think it's needed, and it's actually, you're in a great location because you're on a bus line, and that's great for the type of housing you want to do in there. And I get that as well. So I'm in support of the letter myself.
When George came, I know you put up a new wall inside the courtyard. I think that was like seven years ago?
A portion of it.
Yeah, a portion of that wall, the east side of the wall. And then there was some work that you needed to do on the stairs, and I think you did some of that. So.
As part of this recent indication, you'll see that, you know, I mentioned the 300 line of feet of the balance of that retaining wall is in that number. In order to get that replaced, we are looking again to reduce the heat island and actually increase the amount of green space. You know, so some concrete will be coming out and replaced with either landscaping or sod. And then again, that's part of that whole discussion about, you know, finishing what we started.
You're going to keep abundance?
Sorry?
You're going to keep abundance?
Yeah, the public. Yeah, abundance stays.
But we are, again, it's a matter of, you know, what is really needed. And we don't have enough green space. As you heard earlier, we have a lot of children, and so how do we increase the green space? How do we make it softer? How do we make it quieter? How do we make it less expensive to maintain? You know, when you take out concrete and put it in sod, it's a little bit easier to maintain. That's less to shovel, less to repair in the long term. So those are the things we're looking at as well, from a, you know, green space, sustainability, you know, softer environment as well. And that's one of the things that we've worked on. Now, what's the final plan look like? We don't know, but that's what we try to get into the budget. And again, as we've seen over the last few years, the way inflation and the marketplace has kind of squeezed everybody, you know, again, we're trying to maximize that value. But again, first and foremost, Mayor, is to make sure that the residents have a greater place to live in.
Yeah. You, as well as we, because those tenants that you have are not only your constituents, but ours.
Oh, yeah.
And we need to make sure that they have a good experience, a living experience in the city. And it's your product, and my hope is that you will continue to have pride in a product.
We do.
Yep.
Okay, so what you need from us is a letter in support of your reinvestment in the building, capital and operations.
Yes. Again, I'm there.
You're there?
Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, if this is going to help improve the building and give it a fresh coat of paint, I'm in support of that.
Kara?
I'll let Councilmember Keely go first. I have some reservations, but.
Dan?
I'm generally, well, the building is in dire need of an update, and so, well noted. And I think we all share some concern as to why it got this bad before you decided to invest several million dollars into it, but it is needed. I think the housing, looking at your graph of people that make up to 10,000 and up to 20,000, that's 50% of your tenants barely make a living income of any kind. And so that is a reflection of there's a need in our society for affordable housing. And I appreciate companies that want to obviously partner with public money and put down these projects. I just wish this one was maintained better over the years. So I would expect that investment, with this renewed investment with success at the county and the state, that we'll get a much higher quality product than what it is today. And the residents will definitely enjoy a nicer place to live and. And the residents will definitely enjoy a nicer place to live. And that center court is definitely begging for some green space. I agree a hundred percent.
Thank you.
I support it.
Kara?
So I like the plan. We do need, we do need housing that works for, you know, different people in different times of their life, right? And this is an area that we, we are still lacking. My hesitancy comes fr, and yes, I do like the plan, like, don't get me wrong. My hesitancy comes from, I, I tend to look at past performance for an indicator of what you'll do in the future. And, you know, I'm, there's no polite way to say this, not impressed, not impressed with the past performance. And that makes me nervous about the future. However, I also don't want to say, just because something's been done one way for a period of time, doesn't mean that there weren't plans to change it, or, you know, that kind of thing, because not everything turns on a dime, you know, in larger corporations. So I understand that as well. I am, I will, I will not block support on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm supportive of the investment. I am concerned, and if we're going to write a letter, members of the council, I hope that you will support this, that the letter will also reflect our concern about the relocation of those wonderful people who have been great tenants for you, and some of them are handicapped, and their displacement. They will be displaced from their homes. And that, that saddens me for those folks. Because some of them, I have gotten to know. And they love where they are, they love the closeness to the park and all of that, and now they're going to lose their home. And they've been good, great tenants. That, I would like our letter, if you support that, to just let people know that that's a concern. So our, because they're our constituents. And that they know that we care about them, and that we care that they're going to be And so that saddens me about all of that, all of this. But improving the building and reinvesting in it is a good thing. My hope is that operationally, going forward, that it is better. And that just because the tenants that you will have are low-income and need subsidy, that you will have the same care for the building that's going to house low-income folks who are going to be subsidized living in your, on your property. So my hope is that your operations and who takes care of that building takes good care and have pride in it. Because those people are our constituents. And they're not shy about calling us, or emailing us, and sending us photos. So they're, so my hope is that in the future, as Councilmember Kara Schultz said, it's, my hope is that performance to the future improves a great deal. You've grown quite a bit from when George started in Minneapolis, and now you have six hundred and sixty employees in the whole operations. And you're what, in five states, did you say?
Six.
Six.
At first, it was just Minneapolis, then you got out to the suburbs, and here it is. So great work. Council, if you're okay with us mentioning, having a paragraph about our concern about the relocation process, but otherwise, it's unanimous that we support the reinvestment in the building.
Would that paragraph dilute the, the letter itself?
Pardon me?
Would that paragraph dilute the meaning of that letter?
Not as, not, no, we're just talking about our concerns. The, and, and the people.
Kara's got concerns, and we start listing a bunch of concerns in there.
No, for, for me, it's the only concern I have. These are people who belong to us.
I hear you, and, and I, I hear them trying to address it in a very good way. I mean.
I understand that.
I didn't ask for my stuff to be put in the letter. I just, I didn't ask for my stuff to be put in the letter.
No, I know. I'm just saying that people have different concerns. I just, I just get concerned about diluting the letter, that's all.
Well, I don't think if we say that we support the reinvestment in, in the building and for them to move forward, that the CDA is going to look astute. But saying in the, in the letter that I'm concerned about, you know, the longtime residents who have been paying market rate, for them, for those residents, to look and see that we cared about them and mentioned it, that's all that is about. Otherwise, they can see that we want them.
We're doing right here, right now.
Huh?
Which we're doing right here, right now.
Yeah. But, you know, but sometimes people will say, I want to see what you did. And I will always direct them to the, this meeting, because it's recorded.
Yeah.
And I will, and it's going to be on YouTube and also on our streaming, and the website where it's streamed, so they can also see that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I would say that I'm ninety-nine percent positive that all of those individuals will qualify to remain at the property. And if they do not, we will do everything in our power to make this process of displacement as easy as possible and as painful as possible for those residents that we have to vacate. So you have my guarantee, our guarantee, in this process, that we will do that. I worked with Common Bond, I don't know if you know Common Bond?
Yeah.
We did sixteen senior properties, two oh two properties, and we had to displace five, only five individual seniors out of a project based Section Eight. And I had to go through that process and make it as easy as possible. And there was not, I mean, they accepted that, they worked through it, it took about six months to go through that process with them, but they, we found them another Section Eight property that they can move into. So we know that, we have that experience, we will make it as easy as possible, as, as painful as possible for those residents that have to relocate.
That's good to hear. And as I said, when Councilmember Dan Gustafson asked, you know, our meetings are, are transparent and are recorded. So they stay forever. And so, yeah. So you object to having a, a sentence in there?
I prefer we don't, but if the majority wants it, I'm not going to block it.
I, I just don't, I would just like to give them the letter of support they're looking for, period, and I think it needs to stay clean, personally.
You don't, okay, you don't want to have anything that talks about concerns.
I don't think we need, I mean, and I, I just want to point out, I heard up to forty might be displaced, and ninety percent probably won't, so there's probably.
You just don't know.
We just don't know until.
You don't know, but you sense that there's a lot of your market rate, you did make the comment earlier a couple times, a lot of your market rate, you are aware of the fact that they actually are, could be in qualified.
Correct.
Housing. And so I'm guessing that's really where you're getting your idea that it's going to be most will remain and few will be displaced.
If you're looking at households with disabilities, majority of the time, they're on social security or SSI, or if they have income, we have part-time employment, all depends on the situation. And, you know, the median income for households under sixty percent is pretty high. So I, I am positive majority of the households will qualify.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question?
Okay.
Sure.
Is it possible, when you're qualifying people that are at market, that their rent could go down because they do qualify?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct, that is correct.
All right. Thank you.
And if the rents are going from fourteen to sixteen, down to twelve to thirteen, that's not a dramatic shift. Or maybe it is a dramatic shift, but.
Because if you're on fixed income, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm saying, the ceiling doesn't, if you're there at fourteen and the qualifier's thirteen, I mean, that's not a massive, but.
Well, it appears that we, we write a letter of support that just says we support the, the reinvestment in the building. And so, and I guess I'm okay, because I can go to this meeting and have people listen to what is being said, and so that they understand. Yeah. So, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have our direction. We will prepare a letter. I will share it with you, and Jeff will manage it through the process.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming in and sharing the process with us, and what you're going to do in the process in relocating the dislocated residents. And I pray that you're kind.
We are.
Yeah.
We are.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I just want to point out, many, many years ago, George came before us with a, a project, an apartment project on some vacant land near that project, and he came all by himself. Today, we have quite an entourage.
He's on a team.
I know that you had confidence that George could do it all on his own, but I, in his, in his retirement years, he's, he's earned it, and I'm glad to see that you all came.
And you all, and you all know that that property, just to the west of the building and nor, and south of the Ames Center is your, your property. What we refer to as the night seed property. And, and so that project was approved, but, you know, nothing happened, because then the recession hit. So, but it's still your property. And you can do something with it, so.
We've been trying.
Yeah.
Get us a restaurant down there.
Say hello to Chris, appreciate the investment, and.
Yeah.
We will.
Yeah, and, and.
I was wondering why he didn't come.
And I hope that, I, I hope that you're successful with the CDA, and I think you have to go to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency as well.
Yes.
And then, do you have to go to HUD as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And so you have different instruments under HUD that you can also use for.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Right.
Your building.
Hence why construction won't start for about a year.
Well, yeah, because I know when you're doing projects like this, it's a very laborious project, because it's not only county, you have state and you have federal.
Yep.
Yeah. That you're going to have to go through. So I'm very aware of what that process is like.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Say hello to George.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the Public Improvement Special Assessment Discussion. And Jen Deserud, our city engineer, is going to be presenting. And Jen, this is a leftover from our council meeting with the gentleman who came and asked about his, the assessment for front footage and, and back of, the back footage of, yeah. And then, and then to come and to find out that it was, what, twenty years ago?
Twenty, yeah, twenty years ago.
A little outside the range.
A couple years.
Because Bob.
Three to five's not working.
As Bob Eubanks used to say, just outside.
Just a touch.
I think it's Bob, not Bob Eubanks.
Bob Uker.
Bob Uker. Went a while, pitched, went into the stands.
Just to level set this conversation, I, I had asked that we bring back an initial conversation from the DIAS to work session, to give staff a bit more direction on if you wish to explore further updates or changes to your assessment policy. So Jen's done a nice job of preparing a little bit of information to help inform that discussion. And then, from there, we will take your direction and come back to you if needed.
Okay. Very good. Jen, you have the floor.
So I just wanted to just set the stage with the four twenty-nine state statute and address one of the, the points that was made at the meeting about the special benefit test, and how do we determine the methodology to use for special assessments? So just to define, special benefit is an increase in the market value due to the improvement. And it's required, the part of that special benefit test is that a uniform assessment is applied to the same class of property in the assessed area. So that's why we break up our assessment rates by single-family, multifamily, commercial slash other, because those are the same types of properties in the area. So when we're comparing, we should be comparing, like, property types or classes when we're figuring out what is the special benefit for those. And front footage is a common methodology that's used everywhere, because it is kind of ties to that special benefit. If you have a longer frontage, it stands to reason that you benefit more in that special benefit test. So that is the, the common methodology that we use. And then for policy five point oh one oh, that's our Public Improvement Special Assessment policy, it was updated in June of 2020, and the update was just to come up with a per-unit rather than the individual front foot. But we didn't make it effective in 2020, because that was midway through our process. So we kept 2020 in the old way, and it was effective with our 2021 street improvements. So this is our third year of implementing the per-unit for single-family. Here's the old policy, had the full front-footage lanes was for the short side, that's the green line. We did a half-front-footage lanes for the long side and no charge for the third side. So this example shows all three, a frontage along that, you know, where their driveway came out, they would pay a larger assessment, because they're paying the full width. And then the backside here on South Cross, they would have paid half that frontage at the rate. And then on there's one, there's one little red line that had a third frontage, they went and assessed for that third side. But we updated, we still use front footage as the basis. So what we do is we take the full front footage for each of the construction methods, and we apply the rate, and then divide it over the total number of units. And we apply it to the driveway side. So if your driveway faces the, the street we're doing, then that's when you'd be assessed. And on these, that, if I go back, no driveways on South Cross, in this case, they, in the, in the new way, wouldn't be assessed. The policy did not allow for any sort of phase-in of this change, but we do have this policy note that all minor issues and discrepancies be resolved by, by me. So I have used that discretion with our policy, or with our, in the past few years, to determine if they should be assessed or not, because of, we've looked at the past assessments. So this chart just shows, in the past three years since we've implemented the policy in 2021, we had sixty-seven multi-frontage properties out of just under three hundred. And of those, twenty-one were not assessed previously, so they were either on a county road on the side yard, they were, it was considered the third side, so they didn't get assessed, or it was original construction, so they were not assessed. And then the years, we had, two thousand and five, sixteen properties were assessed in two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, eleven, and two thousand and nine, nineteen. And looking at those, the majority primarily were for rehabs, so their assessments were in that five to six hundred dollar range, whereas our current rehab rate is two thousand dollars, so, or not, sorry, rehab, reclaim, which is what all of these new properties are being assessed for. In 2022, we had seventy-three multi-frontage, twenty-six of them had not previously been assessed, and there, there's the previous assessments in two thousand and four, two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve. And then this current year, we have forty-one out of two hundred and sixty-one, nine of them had not been assessed prior. And that, that Canely Drive, or Canely Road is, is the majority of them were assessed in the year two thousand, which is what the gentleman who came to the meeting had, was talking about. Three of them in two thousand and three, eight of them in oh eight, one in 2012, and we have two that we're not proposing to assess, that are still currently being assessed for a reclaim from 2018.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah. Ben?
Do you know how many of those people were the same then as they are now? Because obviously, you're going by property, not necessarily owner.
We're not going, we don't know the owners, and it's too difficult to go back and see how many times it changed over. But I know that those two that are 2018. But I know that those two that are 2018 are currently being assessed. So we know that whether they changed ownership and kept the assessment on the property or they are the same owner, we just, we don't have that information.
But it's probably very possible, highly possible, that a lot of the people that were assessed in the mid-two thousands likely are gone or have.
It's possible.
Yeah.
So that's the information we've prepared and so to reiterate Greg's policy question, we're just wondering if there's any further investigation you'd like us to do or any updates to make.
Okay. Yes.
Well, since our new policy really just charges for frontage going forward, I think we might have saw that.
Yeah. It's a per unit.
A double type.
Yeah.
We don't seem to get into neighborhoods where we do one side of the road one year and then the other side behind them the next year. It's usually many years apart, it feels like. And you have the, the ability administratively to assess or not assess somebody based on what some work we just did.
Right. So we do, we are looking back to see how recent was the last assessment. And looking at that one from 2018, we did make that judgment call that that was, they're still paying.
So the policy is kind of administrative already for you guys to, you have the power to make those decisions.
Yep. Some discretion for minor, minor things. And I, I would say I use that discretion to take out assessments, not to add them in. So.
That's good to know.
It's smart, minor discretion.
Dan K.
Thank you. Well, Councilmember Gustafson, I'm glad we changed the policy, but that didn't cure the problem. The problem's only created when there are properties with roads on both sides and within a reasonable period of time. And I think I'd said three to eight, three to five years would be reasonable. So my only question was, is there anybody in the last five years who just got done paying for one side of their house that may, like this gentleman was, even though his was twenty-two years ago, that are now being assessed because it's the drive, driveway side? And maybe within five years, they paid for the backside of the side, right? If they're on a corner lot.
The answer's no.
That's, that's, yeah, that's what I was looking for.
The answer's no. The answer's not in the last, that 2018 is the only instance.
So within a five-year period going forward, we don't have any double payers per se, put it that way.
I mean, we'll look at it every year. The intent is to look at it every year. So in, in 2024, we will look, take a look back and see.
Yeah.
What, what, who are currently paying.
That's, that was my concern and it sounds like we've got a methodology to at least test it.
It's in place.
And see if anybody pops up in that radar.
Or a fifth year, nobody should.
Well, the thing is, I remember when we changed the policy to per unit rather than front footage, we gave staff the administrative, so that they can work with, with our residents on a case-by-case basis when they bring it up. So I think we have a good policy in place and we don't need to continue having staff research things that we don't need to do. Greg, you had a comment?
I, I was just going to reiterate what was talked about. The, the discretion allowed in the policy for the city engineer to, to situationally address minor issues really takes care of the question. Councilmember Keely, to Jen's point, 2018 would be the last on, on current year projects and Jen has already addressed those. I think it's also a good opportunity to point out that that administrative discretion is important to allow Jen to interact with our community members when things come up and she does a great job of solving these problems. So I'm very confident that reflects the council's direction at this point.
Okay.
And thank you very much for the lightning-fast turnaround.
That was one of the fastest I've seen in a long time.
Councilmember Keely, that's the other thing that I was going to mention. When I asked you all to hold this for discussion, it was not my intention that Jen and her staff would go back and, and pull all of this together, but they did because they are excellent in that way. So that recognition is, is well deserved for Jen and her team for pulling this together.
Amazingly fast.
Okay. Thank you. So nothing else to be done with this particular item?
We have a direction.
We will now. That sets a dangerous precedent for things to come back within one week.
That, that risk and the return is duly noted.
Why can't we do that all the time?
No, no, we can't.
With background?
Thanks, Jen.
Not unless you want to add more staff. Not just Jen's department, we did.
Thanks for the direction. Appreciate it.
Okay, very good. The next item is participatory budget and Jenny Rhodey, our finance officer, is going to be presenting. Jen, the floor is yours.
Mayor and Council, just before Jenny gets started and Mac pulls the presentation up first, I, I just wanted to thank you for your patience on this topic, right? We went through quite a bit of change as this idea came up. You all were gracious enough to give us time to figure out what a governance process might look like. That's what we're back in front of you tonight for. Should, our intention is a brief discussion on what that time, timeline might look like, certainly get any feedback that you have and then staff's prepared to, to move into the governance process as you last discussed. With that.
Jenny.
Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. In June of 2021, council really asked staff to consider how the community might direct a small portion of their property tax in the budget process. And to explore that further, council directed staff to send this to the governance process. So as Greg said, after we paused to focus on the 2023 budget last year, we wanted to bring a potential timeline or what the timeline that we're proposing back to council tonight. As we looked, looked back at the meetings and kind of reviewed everything, this is what we had heard from council. The council wants us to consider how the community might direct a small portion of their property tax, that you're open to format in parameters, that we should be creative and thoughtful in the budget process. And really, again, the consensus was to send to the governance process. We reviewed legal considerations with the city attorney. Whatever method, budget authority is not delegable. Council must reserve the legal authority to budget and allocate property tax, but council may solicit input from the community and use it to inform the budget process and, and their budget decisions. Financial considerations, we just wanted to run through estimates on those. Investment to date, about thirty thousand, mostly in staff time and legal and consulting fees as well. The development cost, we estimate the white paper development as part of the governance process to be approximately fifty thousand dollars. In terms of program costs, annual administration, just, you know, staff time and other, other resources as needed, we estimate from approximately forty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars annually for administration of that process. And then finally, in terms of community-directed funding, that's really as, as up to council in terms of whatever you decide and however to, whatever type of program you decide to go forward with. And finally, timeline. Tonight, we start with a, just review of the governance process timeline. We've proposed March 28th as the environmental scan in the white paper presentation, May 23rd for expert testimony, and June 27th for public comment, and August 29th for council dialogue.
Can you turn around a, an environmental scan in one way?
March 28th. Can I say, oh, yeah, okay, sorry. Yes, sorry, I thought I got the wrong date there. Excuse me for a minute. It'll be tight. It's going to be an, it's an aggressive timeline to turn that around. I know we most likely will be working with consultants, but we think we can do that.
Mayor and Council, I would add that it is a, it's a fast turnaround time. We believe that it's, it's doable and I've, I've chatted with a couple of you just about how, how we manage governance process overlaid with our annual early budget calendar. From a staff perspective, we believe that it's necessary to turn it around in, in that amount of time to allow the, to allow this process to essentially function well with our existing 2024 budget process that we would be running through 2023.
Okay. Dan G.
How many of us will be in Washington DC on the 28th?
I don't leave until.
Well, Dan K.
I am.
I think you told me you're going to be in Washington DC.
Tuesday, yeah, I don't come back till Tuesday night. So I'll be, yeah.
We will have to go back and adjust.
Yes, we will.
Flaw in this law.
Yes.
It gives you an extra week.
I get in it. Well, I just, I just want the council to be, to be aware that this is our, this was our best attempt at trying not to add nights or additional meeting obligations to the council or to staff. We'll, we'll go back and, and try to overlay it with the budget calendar again. My, my warning to all of you is administratively, we have a, we have a long and robust budget process that we started last year that we're replicating this year. Adding these meetings to that process is going to add stress to the calendar. So I'm doing my best to try to keep on Tuesday nights and that was the, kind of the reflection of our best work here, but certainly we missed that and we'll have to make an adjustment for it.
The fourth Tuesday is always had been put aside for governance and, and that's what you're reflecting in all these dates.
And, and Madam Mayor, just for point of reference and a reminder, last year, we used the fourth Tuesdays to do budget organizational analysis service inventory. Your, the budget calendar that you have in front of you for the 2024 budget does include the assumption that we will need similar time for department budget presentations to happen in a similar manner to your, to, to the budget process that we created last year. So we're going to have to, we'll do some interesting calendar math to figure out how to, how to make that work and how to, how to overlay some of these components without stressing folks' calendars.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I'd sent you and Greg a note about something we did some years ago before Greg came on board where we did run a governance process on Tuesdays of regular meetings because our regular meetings have become relatively short thanks to our really long work sessions, which we love to spend three or four hours here on the second Tuesday of the month. And I, I would encourage staff and council to look at those Tuesdays and try and not overload fourth Tuesdays or even use fourth Tuesdays if, if it's avoidable. I think when we're, you know, when we come to City Hall and if our meeting's only thirty minutes, I would like to use that evening to have more meeting time and get more work done rather than coming for a fifteen or twenty-minute meeting and then have to come back on a fourth Tuesday. So wherever there's light schedules, and I know they're not a hundred percent predictable, but if you look in the last year or two, it's pretty predictable that the first and third is a fairly quick, light meeting and you just got to stay away from work sessions because these are not light and short and see if we can more efficiently use council member time. Let's put it that way.
Yeah. Michelle?
To Councilmember Keely's point, we are doing exactly that for some of the other special work sessions. And right now, every regular meeting through March and April have special meetings after the regular ones.
Thank you.
Not governance.
And I would reflect that too, Councilmember Keely, your point's well taken. I agree. Not only is it a good use of, of the council's time, it's a good use of staff's time.
Yeah.
To be efficient and effective. I will remind the council that the current, the current budget calendar basically assumes that, that we're doing just that through the rest of the year. So additional Tuesdays will likely be needed. I'm going to, I'm going to do my best, but additional Tuesdays will likely be needed, fourth Tuesdays, to, to complete this process well as, as it's outlined.
Yeah, and budget's kind of a big deal.
Yes, and certainly things like department presentations and additional capital presentations in the 2024 budget process that we're planning to, to enhance that.
Kara?
So my question is, so last year we had a very robust schedule for budget. This year, we're also looking at a very robust schedule for budget. Is that, is that how it's going to be in the plan from here on out?
Councilmember Schultz, it's a great question. Staff is, is currently assuming that the council's direction is a similar budget process from last year repeated into future years. Certainly for the 2023 process, developing a 2024 budget, just by way of, of kind of continuing some of the 2023 conversation, I think it's going to be necessary this year. We look to the council's direction for future changes. Staff will probably have some ideas once we get through this budget process. Really, there's, there's two focal points or additions to this budget process, a stronger focus on capital discussions, informing future capital plans, and making sure that we continue to incorporate department presentations this year. That will be focused on departmental work plans or strategic plans informed by your strategic priorities that then will inform the budget conversations that I have with staff. So certainly that's the assumption that's been made into the 2024 budget process. Beyond that, I think some feedback from the council and from the leadership team frankly will be necessary to inform what future processes might look like.
Thank you.
Jen, can you put back up the costs so far that you've addressed with all of this? And in, in research that I have done in, in looking at this process, it, it talks about it being very time-consuming compared to an imposed budget. I think the question is, we want to have citizen engagement in all of this. And is this something that we want to do, taking into consideration the, the cost that we already have in place? And that's going to mean, like right now, a half a percent of the levy? Jen? I mean. The developmental cost, the program cost and so forth as you look.
So as you look, yeah, it, it could be, right?
Really what I would say, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the investment to date, we believe it's about thirty thousand dollars of staff time. There's a little bit of consulting, professional services that we've used just in our initial research. We do believe that there's about fifty thousand dollars of additional staff time and perhaps some consulting dollars depending on timing. All of that being said, those are, those are costs that we will simply reprioritize in your 2023 budget to cover. Any sort of program cost, as it's reflected in the third bullet point, really that's, that's the council's determination after the governance process, right? We'll work through the governance process, we'll figure out answers to all of the questions that many of us have expressed and, and the council's talked about. Once we land on that, we'll be able to cost that better for you. And then we can talk about, is that something we can absorb in, in our current budgeting? Is it something that we would need additional capacity for? Does it replace something that we're currently doing, right? All of those will be questions that we would answer through the, through the governance process. So future impacts would be to, to be determined, much like the community-directed funding component, right? How much of the, how much are we talking, right? Are we talking twenty dollars? Are we talking a percentage? Really, that's a council outcome to be determined at a later date. We would cost those things then through the governance process and that would inform your future decision-making from a budget perspective.
So, Councilmember Schultz, then it's, you would like for us to continue on with the participatory budget process through governance?
Yes, because that was council's direction. We agreed to do the governance process, so I think this was just to tell us the timeline.
Yeah. I think we also asked for, for more information as we continue to move forward, so, and we've gotten some more information about what that would look like. Dan K.
I'm good with it. I, I think this is part of our bold and leading and innovative type of approach to budgeting. I haven't changed my opinion since our all-day work session a year ago. I think it's a, a great program. It's different. I don't see too many cities doing it and I think there's a path forward to be able to get it done.
Dan G.
I have expressed concerns about it before. I still want to know what the, is the goal, community engagement? Is that what we're looking to do? And is this the right way to do community engagement in our budget process, in our governance itself? It's a, we've had some success with our ordinance committee, but I will tell you that, you know, we went from fifteen to eight now. Maybe six of those eight are actually participating on a regular basis. And so how much money do we spend to get to that number again to advise us or at least, you know, tell us what they think they'd like to have happen? That's, that's where I struggle with it. I, I looked at the Detroit thing that Dan had brought up last year and pretty big city and they didn't have, percentage of population wise, it was very minimal who, who participated. And I don't even know what the success of that was at the end. I, I know it was a consent decree with the Fed. I, I know it was a consent decree with the federal government when they did it. So it's, you know, we, uh, I, I like the idea of, of community engagement. But I sometimes wonder, I mean, we, we all, all of us, we, uh, we live this stuff every day. We're, we're in the budget all the time. We're dealing with our staff all the time and I think we all have a pretty good understanding what needs to happen in this city to make things happen. I, I, I sometimes look at our surveys and then I go, that kinda tells me where we should be spending our money. Is it an economic development or safety and that sort of thing? That, that guides me a lot as where we should go. And so I have concerns about it. I, I did and I still.
I, I can understand that. Uh, my question, Madam Mayor, are we relitigating this because it was, we already agreed to the governance process? Like that's moving forward unless, Madam Mayor, you want to bring a proposal forward that you kill this and that's what you're asking. Otherwise, we're moving forward with this on the governance process and this is giving us the information of what the schedule is.
Yeah.
So I don't understand what we're doing here.
Well, because when we did that, I said the governance process is the appropriate avenue, but I'd like more information for us to then direct staff whether we proceed with it, simply because from.
That is not what we agreed to on that. That may have been what you said, but when we took the vote to see if we were going forward with this or not, that was the vote. The vote wasn't, we're going forward with it, but maybe we're not. The vote was governance is where this is supposed to go and that is what we're doing. We cannot get the answers that everyone is looking for until we go through the governance process. So that's what we need to find out. Is it a viable idea? How would we frame this? What are the costs? We have a lot of questions. We don't have the answers. We're not going to get them until we go through.
Okay. Vince?
Um, that's fair, Kara. I also have some concerns about this, but to your point, um, we pride ourselves on making informed decisions and the governance process gets us that information. So, yeah, I, I'm, I've been waffling on this a bit, um, about the vibe, you know, the actual execution of this, but to your point, um, let's make sure we have all the facts before we make a final decision.
I think we have to trust the process and the outcome will be determined when we go through the, the governance process that we already decided that we were gonna go through.
Dan G.
Uh, I, I know we used to have a policy when governance started, you couldn't stop it. And can we agree that if we get down the road and we go, no, this, this doesn't look good to us, that we can stop it so we don't go through all those steps?
My question to you is, what step would you not want to do? The expert testimony?
I, I don't know. I'm just saying, we might get to the expert test. We might get to the expert testimony and we go, this doesn't make sense. If we may get to the other one. I'm just saying that we should have the ability to stop anything that's going on in governance if we start to realize this just doesn't work for us. Because there used to be a time when, once it started, it, it went to the end.
Usually for a good reason, but I think the council has a discretion to decide. If we get, if the majority of the council at some point through the process wants to abandon it, that's our prerogative.
I just, I wanna put that out there because one of the, one of the raps we used to have about our governance process, and Dan, you were here, once it started, we went to the end, whether we knew halfway through that we probably weren't gonna do this.
We haven't done it in a long, long time.
Quite a few years, no, no. We haven't, but I, but you and I were both there when it was happening.
Yeah, I mean, we did more back in the O's.
Yeah. We did it for tiny homes. I think that was the last time.
The last one we did was for local option sales tax.
That's right.
I think that was Vince's first, first memo.
And, and we stopped it before.
And we did not go past the white paper.
Right.
Yeah. We did not go past the white paper and that was the last.
It's all Vince's fault. It was his first.
And I would defer. He was so new then, we just couldn't take it any further.
Couldn't put the burden on him.
I would defer to the city clerk, but nothing that I have read, uh, indicates that, that the council can't at your discretion determine an outcome to include stopping the process.
Yeah.
No, I, I understand that. What I'm not, what I'm questioning right now is, we agreed to governance and before governance even starts and we're just talking about schedule, there's pressure to kill it and I, I don't, I don't understand why that's happening.
Just so you understand, I hear things through this governance and it starts to make sense to me. I'll, I could change my mind how I feel about this.
Nope, you're good. You're good.
Or I might not change my mind at all.
No, I, and I, I totally understand that, but you know, we have to, we have to get into it because it could be that we look at it and we're like, as of right now, doesn't make sense or we can't do it. Or, you know, whatever. Um, and, and that's fine. I have, I have no problem with that. I understand that, that like, that is how it goes, right? And we'll see. I mean, there, there's so many ways that this can be done and we haven't narrowed it down precisely because of that. And so we don't have hardly any of the answers at this point, you know? And that will be the interesting part of it is, how many different ways is this currently being done, not just in the U.S., but places overseas? And what was the benefit they saw and what were the challenges that they faced on it? Because nothing's, nothing's perfect, that's for sure. So, you know, and I get that we'll have to revamp this schedule a little bit because we're, we're not here. Um, and we're also trying to meld this in with the budget process, which is good because it's a budget item. And I'm, I am, I was totally fine being patient, waiting for this come, to come up because I would rather something like this be done right and in a time when we can focus on it than to try to rush something just because I had an artificial deadline or someone had an artificial deadline in their mind. So I'm happy with this timeline, other than the, the tweaks that will need to be done. And I was happy to wait until this year for it to move forward, so. And I think it's appropriate at this time that we look at it.
Okay. Are we moving forward?
Yeah.
We said we were gonna do it, so let's do it.
Okay. So, um, Steph, you have the direction to move forward.
So, Mayor and Council, a couple of things. First, this timeline's gonna need to be adjusted based on tonight's conversation. Sorry about that. We'll, we'll deal with that. Um, also to, to level, to level set expectations, this is a new idea, right? So, Councilmember Schultz, to, to your point, um, uh, we are gonna do our best to not leave stones unturned, uh, and this white paper and this experience is going to be different than any other governance process that you all have gone through. So just, just from my perspective, I think it's important that, that we're just, we're all honest with each other, that we're gonna do our darndest to, uh, to per, to prepare a, a, a great environmental scan for you. Um, and that might be an iterative process based on, on feedback that comes out of those discussions. So, um, that, that open-mindedness will be, will be helpful, particularly as we go through the remainder of the steps as well, right? Expert testimony will look differently on this one than it would on local option sales tax. So we'll work through it to the best of our ability. Just using the last example, Councilmember Gustafson stepped in that one. So what I will do is, is prepare an updated timeline for you based on the NLC schedule. Um, I'll just also, the second thing that I, that I wanted to, to repeat just for the sake of clarity is, um, we're gonna need to use fourth Tuesdays, um, between the, the 2024 budget process and this. Um, I'm gonna do my best to be efficient and to respect everyone's time, but again, to, to level set that. Councilmember Keely, I hear your point and I agree with it and I also, I also know it's gonna take the time, so.
Thank you. So, the next, so staff has direction with regard to this item? And now, um, we go to, council's reports. Councilmember Schultz?
Main thing on the, um, report is Dakota County broadband voted to, uh, redo a template for a, for use in, um, working on a joint powers with the county. The county had submitted one, but that one was rejected. The board, uh, voted to accept their template for use. However, as I understand it right now, county is not accepting that template. So I'm a little unclear on where that's at and I'm hoping that we get clarity at our next meeting on that. Um, but we have a, we have a time clock because the county's out in March, so. So, uh.
They continue to pay till August, don't they, don't they?
Yeah, we all have a payment schedule. Yeah, yeah. Um, yep, yeah.
But and the county being out, that takes them out of the voting for what's gonna happen going forward then?
Yeah, they're done.
Yeah.
Yep. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what the clarity is on that for Dakota County broadband. And then, um, then we'll see. Then we might have items that, and I'll try to work with Greg to get them on the schedule if there's items that will need to come back to council to either get your feedback on or your questions or, um, take a vote so that I know how to vote in the next meeting. So, up in the air. Still up in the air.
Dan K.
I've got some updates from, uh, MBTA and STA. Some, a lot going on with MBTA. Our, we did a, um, our last meeting, we got a 2022 service, um, sort of recap. Our rides topped a million first since 2019 and it was 61% over 2021. MBTA Connect, our micro transit on demand was up 137%. Express into downtown was up 117, so it's starting to, uh, crawl back at a little faster pace as more employers in downtown. Our 2023 goals for ridership were to get to 1.5 million or a 50% increase through four different avenues. New normal ridership and that would be just more of that express downtown, returning, expanding special events. Uh, it's been a very big growth area for, um, MBTA to provide, uh, transit solutions to all kinds of special events, major regional concerts, uh, tractions, et cetera. The most recent this past year was, um, Ren Fest. Ren Fest in Scott County, if you've read any of that news, is struggling with immense traffic backups, uh, as a result. So they're very interested in, and Scott County's very interested in, um, consolidating the number of vehicles on the roads and getting people on a bus. Airport service implementation, which will be new, uh, and then just a network redesign. So, um, a lot of good stuff there. A labor, uh, you've all read about the shortage of drivers. MBTA experiences a 15% labor shortage compared to the national 25%, so we do a little bit better. And, uh, thanks to our, our partner, Schmiedian Sun, uh, is our subcontractor for the drivers. They do a great job of attracting drivers and employees and retaining them as a, as an ESOP company, uh, which is employee stock ownership. MBTA recently secured 17 million in some federal funds and we're always going out for more and more grants. Uh, we're a big part of the County Road 42 BRT study, uh, which we hired Kim Lee Horan Consulting to conduct. Obviously, um, County Road 42 is a major east-west artery that, uh, MBTA, because of the growth in suburb-to-suburb ridership, which actually took the smallest hit during the pandemic and has grown beyond pre-pandemic levels, there's a lot of east-west artery uh, types of opportunities that we, that we see. Burnsville Bus Garage Modernization Phase One should be completed this spring and Phase Two starts in third quarter of this year. Another exciting thing is we're going after a RACE grant to transform the Burnsville Transit Station into a mobility hub. Uh, it actually fits into our 2028 Transform Plan and it'll include a travel training center, community space and a lot more. So hoping, hoping, cross our fingers, to get, uh, the RACE grant and, uh, we'll be able to move that up, um, construction of that and, and really do some fantastic things with the Burnsville Transit Station, which people think generally is a giant parking lot or parking deck, uh, or ramp, um, when you wanna take a bus somewhere, right? But there's a facility there that can be used for even more and, uh, that RACE grant, um, will allow us to do that. So, um, we're involved in a system-wide study, um, sort of stepping back and taking a very holistic, comprehensive look at the entire MBTA territory service area. Uh, and that is gonna conclude by March 1st, so it's coming up here in a, a couple of weeks. And, um, a lot of stop fixes, uh, a lot of things that'll come out of that study. That's gonna involve, uh, community engage, oh, sorry, community engagement is another goal of ours, um, more social media, community engagement, outreach, community events. Doesn't that have a real familiar ring to it, um, based on what we just did in the city of Burnsville, uh, with our new vehicle, community outreach vehicle? Uh, and there's a, uh, a new person at MBTA that's in charge of all of, of this community outreach and, and the studies and, uh, studies and et cetera. He's sort of a primary contact person now for a lot of the board members and, and some of our partnership, uh, and it's Patrick Chilton. He's done a great job so far. STA update, we met with legislators at the state, uh, state Capitol in a meeting room a couple of weeks ago. We had Chair Hornstein and Chair Dibble, along with four other, uh, state senators and reps attend. Unfortunately, none of our Burnsville contingent could make that particular meeting and so there's been some one-on-one follow-up meetings with, with, uh, two, um, of our representatives and senators from Burnsville. And we had, we had a very good meeting. We put together a, a very comprehensive, um, presentation talking about suburban transit providers, our needs, our funding needs, funding challenges, um, the business model that we have to operate under, which is under the thumb of the Met Council. And, um, we, um, we made a big point about micro transit, which is our MBTA on demand, uh, growing at over a hundred percent year over year and continues to grow as fast as we can put the service in and offer more service broader territory or geo, geo area. Something I found out in developing this presentation with the rest of the group and leadership was MBTA has been funding the growth of MBTA Connect on demand as a result of the express service being done. If express service were to return to normal levels or even close to normal levels in a very short window of time, um, MBTA Connect would take a massive hit. That point was made in our presentation. And, um, I asked specifically if I could have, uh, this particular section of our presentation because I'm a big fan of, uh, MBTA Connect and have been since many years ago when we had a board retreat and, um, that was one of my, um, uh, two points that I wanted to make, that we needed a, an updated app, which we're working on, which I'm thrilled about. It's actually live right now. Uh, so go download the new MBTA app. It's gonna take over the old app, uh, by, I believe it's March 1st or March 30th, uh, the old app will go away. And, uh, this micro transit, so, um, very excited about this. So anyway, um, it was mentioned by a couple of folks in their presentations and I got to be sort of like the baseball cleanup hitter, the fourth hitter and drive it, and, and drive it home. And, um, very, very pleased that Chair Hornstein and Chair Dibble were there. Chair Hornstein, uh, called over our lobbyist and asked for an immediate meeting to write a bill to get funding, standalone funding for micro transit for all suburban transit providers and, and Metro Transit. Metro Transit actually just got into the micro transit on demand about a year ago, sometime after, uh, the STA providers, uh, really innovated it and actually credit where credits do, Southwest Transit, they call theirs prime, they were the very first one in the metro to offer on-demand service. And so it'll take a while. Obviously, we're hoping that the bill will get heard, will get assigned to committee and, uh, with Chair Hornstein authoring it, uh, a good chance that we'll be able to get it through. What it'll do is ensure that when, as express service comes back, we'll have the funding to keep MBTA Connect. What it'll do is ensure that when, as express service comes back, we'll have the funding to keep MBTA Connect going and growing at the rate that it is. So, um, uh, good news there. It was a very positive, uh, meeting with our legislators and, and, uh, turned out, uh, I don't remember a single time that we've had one of those where we were asked to get in touch with their office of the chair, and they wanted to write a bill immediately and get it introduced. Now, I don't remember a time when the state had seventeen and a half billion dollars either, so. There's, um, there's a lot going on down there that maybe is different from normal. But in this particular case, um, one of the slides that really drove the funding point home was a comparison. St. Cloud was compared to Southwest Transit, and Duluth was compared to MBTA. Our populations are similar in those comparisons. Our funding is less than a third. In one case, it's less than twenty-five percent of what those other cities get in direct funding from the federal government versus funding that comes through Met Council. MBTA, Southwest, Maplewood, and Plymouth suburban transit providers have to rely on an allocation from Met Council to operate our systems and fund our growth. Those systems get money direct from the government, and they get more than two and a half times, nearly four times in one case, what we get for serving the same populated area. So we are asking for, and obviously advocating, to get out from under Met Council and be able to go for direct funding. Big ask, it's going to take a while. Met Council won't like that because, um, they utilize a lot of those funds to help their chronic, uh, budget deficit, uh, problems, and, um, they won't want to let go of any of that, uh, which they haven't, but it is what it is. And that, that, uh, particular slide, there was one particular slide that really was revealing, and we got a lot of eyes wide open and, oh, that's interesting, uh, sort of looks from our legislators. That is all for me tonight.
Okay. Vince?
Um, I promised on our last work session that I would talk about, uh, the Burnsville Festival. Things are moving. We had our first big meeting of the year. Well, not our first, but, uh, my first, um, because I couldn't make the first one. And fundraising is underway. People have been assigned their roles, and, um, it is a much different group and operation than I'm used to since I started with this group in 2015, um, with the goal of it just becoming self-sufficient. Everybody knows what their duties are, and they're off starting those duties, and, um, I think we're going to have another wonderful festival this year.
Dan G.
Uh, Experience Burnsville meets this Thursday, and we all voted on the food truck ordinance change last week for, from the Citizens Group. And I think we're finishing up the secondhand retailers this week, and then we, eventually we go on to the police department, I understand. So lots of exciting things going up there.
Okay. Uh, our Savage Burnsville Joint Council Committee was, um, canceled this last time, so we're going to have the next meeting in a couple of months, a couple of months? Or is it in a month? Yeah, every other month. Yeah. And, um, the Regional Council of Mayors met, and, um, uh, there was a report on housing, ensuring affordable home ownership in a, in, um, in your cities, given by Chris Coleman, President of Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity. And then there was a, uh, report on the workforce equity research findings from the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis. And then, uh, three mayors talked about, uh, understanding equity in their city lessons from their life and lived experiences. The International Festival met, and we continue to move forward as well. And, um, everybody is excited about this year, and everybody has, uh, their roles and responsibilities, and, uh, everyone is, uh, addressing all of that. So that's all I have. Greg, do you have anything from staff side?
Nothing.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I had heard that there is growing discussion about removing the gag order of the Dan Patchline discussion in the Capitol.
At the Capitol, because it's still on, so you still can't have conversations about it.
Discussion to remove it, so that discussion can begin. So I'm wondering if we can all keep our ears to the ground and, uh, make sure we're paying attention to that.
Will that be in the same bill that will now make it illegal to sell or buy a gas-powered lawnmower?
Usually bulk all that stuff together, so probably.
Councilmember Workman, I will add it to our monitoring list and ensure that LGN is paying attention to it.
We can discuss it.
Okay.
Full disclosure, the MBTA is in support of removing the gag order and let adults debate and make decisions.
Okay. All right. If there is no further, uh, reports to be given, we stand adjourned by acclamation.